Oh, we will.
I still have my chicken. All right. We're at, we're at six o'clock. So the city of Glendale Common Council is now in session. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderman Bukovich, Alderman Doherty. Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Wheezy. Alderman Schmelzling. Alderman Shaw.
All right. Our first agenda item tonight is the lengthy, and hopefully not as lengthy. A lot of, a lot of questions were asked of the city administrator in advance, but this is now the explanation and review of the 2022 annual program budget as proposed by the city administrator. And I will turn it over to Ms. Astrum.
Thank you. Before you is the proposed 2022 annual program budget. Staff and myself have taken a significant amount of time to put this together for you. And as we were preparing for this evening, late last week, state of Wisconsin put out additional information, which we are very thankful for because that gives us better numbers. We got our final statement of assessment, which included manufacturing assessments, and we were able to put those, that information into the blue pages. The blue pages that are directly affected by the assessment information is actually page eight, the budget summary. And just a quick highlight that it takes what we proposed originally for the assessed tax rate to be $7.20 per thousand. It goes to $7.35, an increase of 1.16%. And that's based on that equalized or on that assessed valuation. The other changes that were there made in the general fund revenues, there was minor adjustments made to the state property tax equivalent. That number was reduced. And then there was an increase in the North Shore Municipal Court charges that we charged those fees from the court to the city of Glendale for rent. And then those changes also went through into the special revenue funds. And then in the midst of the questions from the elder people, we found a typo in the capital projects fund instead of $750,000 being spent on street lighting alone be 75,000, just a minor error, but it was in an estimated column. And so really, we're okay yet. All right. So with that, we will start the overall presentation. I just wanted to do a brief overview of those blue budget pages. Equalized valuation and assessed valuation are the two ways that we look at our property values. Assessed valuation is the value the assessor puts on the property. The equalized value is what we can compare ourselves to other communities, equalized tax rate, or you may also know it as a market value. So when you're going to sell your house, you're looking to get the market value of your home or the equalized value. So this chart here on the screen indicates the last five years of equalized valuation. We did see a dip from 2018 to 2019. This is equalized valuation with TID included, and that dip is due to the Bay Shore revaluation. As we work through it, we then get to a portion that we need to apply tax levy to fund all of our source, our services that we have for the community. Total tax levy is depicted by CPI. Net new construction at 0.51%. CPI is for expenditure restraint. So net new construction 0.51% is what we can go up in our overall tax levy. That's across all of them. So I'm going to go back up. And you'll see that since 2018, we have gone from $12.6 million in tax levy up to 13.316 is what's estimated. The additional in, in, in addition to the net new construction 0.51%, we can also increase by the amount of the increase in expenditure for the North Shore Fire Department. That's by state statute, and that's that resolution we just passed a couple of weeks ago. Our total tax levy increase then goes to 0.78% because of that additional amount for the North Shore Fire Department, that 72,000. State of Wisconsin assesses manufacturing properties. This is why they have, we have to wait till they are completed with their process to get our final statement of assessment, which we did get. They do their disputes at the state level. That's not something that happens at board of review. And so when we got our final assessment information, that increase in tax rate is due to a lower number being assessed to manufacturing. Our five-year assessed tax rate. So the assessed tax rate is what we apply to your assessed valuation to come up with the tax bill and the Glendale portion of the tax bill. So since 2017, we've seen decreases, a significant decrease, of course, in 2018 to 2019, a majority that's due to the closing of TIF six. And then we've been slowly increasing, and some of that is due to the changes of valuation in the market. We are not able to compare current tax, proposed tax rates. So this is 2020 tax rates for the 2021 tax and budget year that we are comparing. That's why you see Glendale at a lower rate. Also, this is equalized. You compare other communities with equalized tax rates because it's more of a fair market value and, and apples to apples. You can see we're mostly in the middle. One of the programs that the state of Wisconsin has that we participate in is the expenditure restraint program. So long as we keep our expenditures within the level that the state of Wisconsin tells us we can, we receive funding. And in 2022, we anticipate receiving $233,000 because we were able to stay within the levels last year. So CPI came in at 3%. The state of Wisconsin tells us that at the end of August. And then we can use 60% of net new construction. So our net new construction was 0.51%. And 51% of it puts us at, I'm sorry, 60% of us plus the 3% puts us at a calculation of about, I think it was 3.17, but we're coming in at 3.15. This does not include tax levy applied for debt service. So if we have tax levy in a special revenue fund, that expenditure restraint gets applied to a portion of that special revenue fund. Our general fund fund balance in 2018, common council approved a policy that we will attempt to use less than 5% of fund balance in any given year. And the goal at the ending fund balance for a year for budgeting is to be at 25% of our total expenditures for fund balance. The 2022 proposed budget uses 3.83% of fund balance. That is the highest I've ever budgeted for use of fund balance. However, at the same time, we have yet to use fund balance in any given year. We've always come out ahead without, with adding to it, even if it's a small amount. Our estimated ending fund balance for the end of 22 is 30% of the expenditures. So that puts us in a good position. This is a self-imposed regulation. This is not a mandate.
Have a question. Are, so we have not used any of the fund balance so far this year, even though we budgeted to use it?
That's correct.
So that would be added back in at the end of the year. Will we end up this year higher than 30 to begin with?
Um, so in, we're anticipating in 2021 to use about 159,000. And again, that's because I'm estimating fairly conservatively. There's still a few months left. There's still some things that can happen. It's very possible that we can still end on the positive, but we might not. However, we budgeted at using 329,000. So we would still come in at half of what was budgeted.
Okay.
Sure. General fund revenues. If you want to go to page 12, we'll go into the revenues a little deeper, highlighting just a few things. We will continue to see a reduction in state shared revenues as it relates to transportation aids and the expenditure restraint program. We do see a level off the, the tax, computer exemption program. And personnel property are still anticipated to be level. And we saw a slight increase in anticipated special utility tax as it relates to state shared revenues. Anticipated court fines are to increase closer to 2019 levels. They had dropped a little bit in 2020. Still not right there in 21, but in 22, we anticipate them to be back to where they were. That is also true for the anticipated increase in room tax funding that we would anticipate. It goes to a 2019 level. However, at the same time, we're anticipating lower interest investments. Do we have any questions on revenues overall? My plan for expenditures is to hit the high points of what is coming through. Oh, I have, have state shared revenue graph. If you want to see how it's gone down. But for general fund expenses, we will be going through, I will, overall, there are very minor changes. There, there's very minor additions to program areas and service levels. So what we have proposed is to keep services the same. Health insurance expenses actually decreased for the city 4%. And staff cost of living increases are not included in the specific program areas. Right now they are in the wage reserve. The police union contract is not settled yet, nor have I asked the council to make a determination on 22 wages for the rest of the employees. So those, that lump sum stays in wage reserve until you make those approvals, and then we will distribute it out to the program areas. So mayor and common council budget in May of 21, the amount increased for the salary increases that were approved in 2019. Just a reminder, older persons receive $6,000 annually, mayor receives 16,000. And there's a bump for the council president. Other than that, there are no changes to this budget over the past few years. City administrator budget, as always, we announce any out of state anticipated conferences throughout the budget process so that you're aware of them. If anything comes up throughout the year, it would come back to you. And it would have to fit within the program area budget. My conference is slated for Columbus, Ohio in 2022, though it was in Portland, Oregon this year. Due to COVID restrictions, I chose to go online again and participate that way. So there will be a lower cost for my meeting and conferences in 2021.
Had a question.
Yes.
Increase in salary wages from 2019 to 2020, what was that due to?
What we did was in 2019, there wasn't an administrative secretary hired. So then, as we had lost Anna, Kayla was hired and we've put that back into this budget. So that, that's what's included in there. Finance, Sean's conference next year is in June and is in Austin, Texas for GF away. The last couple of years, all of the conferences for him have also been online and that assists with his CPA credits. Under city clerk, instead of two elections in 2021, we will have four elections in 2022. Clerk's annual training is year three of three for the institute that is in Green Bay. That's an in-state training held in July. Yes. We're very optimistic. Well, we'll change the verbiage. Along with that, one of the additions in the clerk's budget is MuniCode. It's an online municipal code program that allows for easier searching of ordinances and then being able to review them. It's easier for general public to be able to find what they're looking for. There are no major changes in the city treasurer budget. And human resources, there's an increase in conference expenses. This is for Jessica to be able to work through the Society of Human Resource Management Certification Program. The city assessor accurate appraisal contract is from 2019 to 2023. It is set to be $54,000 annually. City attorney, we have.
Many years at contract? And when is it up again?
It is up in 2023. It was a four-year contract. It was renewed at the time of the need for the revaluation with Bay Shore.
Right, right.
Yep.
I just remembered it was three or four years. Okay.
City attorney, as you're aware, we will have a new city attorney in January. So it was appropriate to break out the budget justification of what general legal is municipal court. And then we always put a little extra in for outside legal services if necessary, situations such as the juvenile detention center, and we retained that environmental attorney. The municipal court budget is now in the special revenue fund, so we will catch that on the other side. No major changes in buildings and grounds. No major changes in our property and liability insurance. It is anticipated to increase almost $10,000. That is, that is just the way the insurance rates are going right now and what everyone is seeing in that industry. In unclassified, the postage includes for tax notices, property maintenance complaints and absentee ballots. We're keeping it at a little higher level for absentee ballots. We anticipate that that may be something that people liked and that they will continue with. Into the police department, the out of state training identified for the police department would be the national school resource officers. And that is July 3rd to 8th in Aurora, Colorado. And she's not Abby Bonville anymore. She's Abby Lorenz. That's what happens. I can, I can't remember my name that I got married either. So, she, she's our school resource officer and we'll be sending her to that. We anticipate two new hires for officers. We had a small change in how we allocate vehicle maintenance on page 46. In the past, tires and all maintenance of, of the large items on the vehicles went to the public works, even though it was for a squad. And so to property properly allocate for the proper program area, we are putting additional funding in the police. But that's not an overall increase in the budget as a whole. Is it, won't be in public works anymore. Central dispatch has no major changes. That contract's been in place for quite some time. The next is the fire department. They had a very lengthy verbiage that they shared with us. And just to let you know how that's been going, the fire department increase was two and a half percent. However, Glendale, in 2017, we were at 28.16% of the overall budget. That was in 2017, 28.16. In 2022, our portion of the budget is 27.78%. The inspection department is where our floodplain management and our property maintenance complaints are funded. Weights and measures is an annual fee. It's contracted with the state. They inspect the scanners and stores and gas pumps, make sure that they are calibrated correctly. And we're on to public works. Are there any questions? Alderman Shaw.
Out of curiosity, how often do they go out to check out the ways, weights and everything scales?
Annually, and then if there's a challenge with it, they will follow up and they send us an annual report.
Okay, thank you.
Not even though this.
Correct.
By state statute or responsibility of the city, and we're not a big enough city to have our own. So that's why we contract with the state? Or does everybody have theirs inspected by the state and pay, and then we have to pay the state?
Yeah, I don't know that everyone has it. The communities I've worked for have had it all done by the state and it's the same price. It's been the annual price as long as I can remember. So.
I've read it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
When you're standing at the gas pump, it's an interesting thing to find. They have a sticker saying that they are in compliance. As far as public works as a whole, for general, there are not a lot of changes. We will be adding vehicle diagnostic tool, software, tool and software that allows for our current mechanic to be able to diagnose problems on smaller vehicles, squads, pickup trucks, and be able to fix some of those items in-house. We have, with our, our new mechanic have brought a lot of that work back in-house and he's doing a fantastic job. We've been wait, for example, we've been waiting on some of the parts from Caspers for turning that truck into a brine truck. And at the same time as we're waiting, he's doing some of the other basic items that we don't have to pay to have that outsourced. So the cost of retrofitting that water tanker into a brine truck goes down. So.
But the software we're getting is that the kind that allows them to plug into the car's computer and then a car's computer tells what the error codes are?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the things that Charlie is looking into, and this is a program we would present as soon as we had more information. It's also part of the capital projects. I'm going to skip a little bit because administering it is in general fund. Capital projects would be facility upgrades and the facility upgrades would include updating the garage doors, making sure that we have secure facility that way. Updating the camera system. And then also there would be the potential of gating off the yard and not having it open every day for residents to drop items off. We have challenges where it's, people come in and sometimes things disappear is it's not monitored on a regular basis.
Sometimes they dump things like mini fridges and televisions and things that normally would have a charge.
So if we're able to open that on a specific time set, whether it's Wednesdays from three to six, Saturdays noon to whatever, we also may be able to open it up and get a dumpster in addition for brush pickup. We're trying to figure out if that's a possibility. People have an alternative for brush then that they could drop it off. We would still have the cardboard container and then also our dumpster days. But if we are able to do this, we'd be looking for a part-time person to man those hours and see if we couldn't find someone who was just looking for part-time work a few hours a week and have that open temporarily instead of on a constant basis and then physically monitored and checking people's addresses to make sure that they are in fact residents. Snow and ice removal. As we talked last year, we're going to continue on this year with our brine operations and that went very well. Street lighting, Charlie's been working with staff to make sure that light poles are being updated and that we're doing some upgrades with LED and cleaning light fixtures to make sure that they are bright enough for people who need to see on the road, as well as continue with our line striping program with the line striper that we purchased. And then we would also potentially do Glendale Avenue with line striping and making sure stop bars are placed in there. Also talking with Milwaukee County about potentially striping Milwaukee River Parkway, though it is not as prevalent since we put up some wrong way signs. It's still at least once or twice a month that you have a runway driver on the parkway. Solid waste collection, the contract runs 2015 to 2024. As we have over the past couple of years, we will continue to make notes for when we do an RFP on that contract for garbage recycling and yard waste that we are adding in items for the next contract that make it a better program.
Can you tell us what those are?
The, the changes.
The additions.
Oh, you'll see them at the time of the RFP. That won't go out until 2023. So we're just keeping a running list.
All right.
And then when the RFP goes out, it'll come to the council before it goes out.
Thank you.
Humane Society covers the operations, capital and debt. We're, we're doing very well and that our numbers are staying steady at 22,000. Health department, that contract was renegotiated in 2018 as well. However, in 2018, we were paying 14% of the overall contract because it was completely based on usage. And the prior administration indicated that if it's based on usage, we just don't advertise it. And so now it has a new formula and city of Glendale is paying 18.6%, oh, 18.06% in 2022. So that is why there's a significant increase. Library, 2021, if there is additional funding needed to review library services, there is funding in the contingency for, for anything that we needed to do with that. And then if we needed to amend the capital budget as well for library, we could do that. But at this point, just thought it was best to budget at status quo. And then if we need to make amendments, that's something that would come back to you. Community development, we are anticipating our community development director to be retiring March 31st of 2022. And so we've scheduled for an overlap of approximately 30 days in that budget. As mentioned before, there's considerable amount in contingency and wage reserve. And with those reasons why, and that is our general fund. Any questions? General fund, all right. Special revenue funds, special revenue funds have little or no tax levy. We have several police acquisition, police dare account, grants, environmental, hotel room tax, events, health and human services, parks, North Shore Municipal Court, and the new one that you will be approving for 2021 and 2022 is the American. and 2022 is the American Rescue Plan. Room tax fund is the first one that has any major changes. Funding is transferred to the general fund and to Welcome to Glendale. General purposes is sixty four point two nine percent. State allows for us to keep that much at a maximum. And tourism, economic development state says we have to give thirty five point seven one percent to an entity. And we are giving that to Welcome to Glendale. That is that. And then our room tax is slowly increasing from its downward trend in 2020. Question? Yes.
I'd said thirty five point seven one percent?
Yes.
And the book says thirty five point one seven percent.
Five point ones.
One seven, okay. Thank you.
Oh, yes, it should be thirty five point one seven. That's a typo. We'll blame Sean for proofreading. All right. Right. So, events, this we were transferring already in 2021 to Welcome to Glendale. They have more opportunity to be able to assist with that funding. And so that is where Music in the Glen and Fourth of July will be administered. Health and Human Services is where our post-employment benefits run through for retirees who have health insurance beyond employment. We are able to, we feel we're able to start lowering the tax levy necessary for that and use some of the fund balance moving forward as some of the retirees time have expired. The park is an ever-evolving challenge. This year's challenge specifically is staffing as we have everywhere and obtaining enough part-time staffing to keep those hours where they were with Wednesdays through Sundays. In 2022, it may be possible to cut back a day or reduce what those open hours are to reduce some of that full-time staff needs and work more with the part-time employees.
Do we have difficulty this past year in getting college students who are home for the summer or?
Yes, we, we had a small staff and it was challenging to get people to apply. And this was, this was around the state. One of the things that happened, and I heard from a friend in City of Oshkosh, the UW Oshkosh apparently, this is kind of a telephone story. So UW Oshkosh apparently had received COVID funds from the government and they distributed to the kids in school for the summer, so they didn't need to work. So entities were, some chose to still, but some chose not to. And it made it just a little more challenging for finding applicants that are usually looking for summer jobs. And if I, I don't know if that was a UW system-wide, but I did hear from Oshkosh on that. Municipal court, though it came in, in 2020 with most likely a deficit, we anticipate recouping that right away in 2021. If not, the agreement says to charge it back to the municipalities. So if we are at a deficit at the end of 2021, then Glendale and Bayside would get invoiced. And if we are at the surplus that is anticipated that we're looking at right now, already into the fourth quarter, it looks very well, then we should be able to see a refund at the end of 2021 to the municipalities. And that's based on the cases per the agreement. Municipal court is funded by the thirty five dollar fee that is part of the citation. So when there's a citation, there's a court cost fee. That's what goes to municipal court. There's a fee that goes to the state of Wisconsin, a fee that goes to Milwaukee, and then the remaining is the actual citation amount that goes to the municipality. Okay, the actual citation amount that goes to the municipality is what you see in our general fund under municipal court. American Rescue Plan Act, and we've talked about this periodically since April. This is what, right now, the anticipated budget is. We are not necessarily requesting to utilize additional funds beyond what we've requested so far. As I've stated a couple of times, still not a hundred percent sure where the pandemic and the needs for the pandemic are going. We can, we have until 2024, end of 24, to identify what we want to utilize these funds for. So not rushing into it, not a bad thing. We can take our time and make sure that we have the funding we need for the pandemic first because I don't believe that if another wave comes through, we're gonna get another wave of money.
Did we actually receive our money or do we receive a certain amount every year? Or do you have to budget for it, pay for it and submit receipts to get reimbursed? How does this work?
The six hundred and sixty eight thousand, two hundred and four dollars has been received. It went into our account. So that, that has come in. And that's why we were able to do the lead lateral replacement and the other. We have to monitor and, and account for everything after the fact. And we have to report back in 2026. And depending on how it's spent over the years, we, if we spend over a certain amount, Sean? If we spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in a year of federal money, we have to do a single audit. And so far, we have not hit that. So.
Are we getting another five hundred ninety one thousand next year?
Correct.
And then that's, that's, I thought we were getting about one point two million, so that would be, okay.
Yeah.
So half this year, half next year.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Does that all make sense? All right. So if there is an opportunity or a need for the ARBA funds, we absolutely come back to the council for approval and for an amendment of this budget. Debt service. The 2019 principal payments that were fairly large, just want to identify again that that was TIF eight debt. Twenty twenty principal payments representing refinancing for prior years for better interest rates. And twenty one and twenty two are back to normal on what our normal debt service principal and interest rates are. Our statutory allows us to have five percent of our equalized value to be our debt limitation, which is a hundred and six million. And our current debt obligation is forty one million. So we're doing very well that way. Enterprise funds. So not my favorite business type accounting. So sanitary sewer, we have not seen a rate increase since 2017. Stormwater, we have not seen a rate increase since 2017. Water, we have not seen a rate increase since 2018. And we've been able to go through and meet all of the needs in each of those funds. We will, however, be reviewing the potential for a rate increase in the second half of twenty two for the water utility. I want to make sure that we don't end up with an eight percent hike that we would be able to do it gradually. So we want to make sure that we do that review. And if there is a rate increase necessary, start with a gradual so that we can move forward.
We share the water utility with several other communities. Do they do the same percentage increases? Like, for example, you know, if we were to look at a four percent increase, would Fox Point and Whitefish Bay also be doing a four percent increase?
No, they, it's not just about the North Shore Water Commission and what happens there. It's also what happens with the infrastructure and the water main breaks and the replacement of water main and how fast you do that. So we may be replacing water mains slightly faster than other communities. Or we might be doing it slower than other communities, which is why we haven't needed a rate increase. So it, it's really more about the infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The utilities are not funded by tax levy. All of the revenues are received from the utility bill. Sanitary sewer utility will continue televising and lining project. Stormwater utility, street sweeping, leaf collection, catch basin repair comes out of there. Also, the ditching program in 2021 began in the Mount Royal subdivision and should be near completion. In 2022, that program is anticipated to continue in the Crestwood subdivision per the identified high priority of the stormwater management plan. The water utility does have North Shore Water Commission with some capital improvements. That's actually in the capital improvement section. They do water tower inspections, painting and hydrant flushing. And they address all of the water main breaks, as I stated. Capital projects funds. We have the general capital projects. TIF seven is the technology district, TIF eight is Bayshore, and TIF six closed in 2019. However, because we still identify 2019 in our historical data, we keep that budget identified. Next year, it will drop off and you won't see TIF six. Capital projects highlighted are the I forty three Port Washington Road project. Will also include some water replacement on there, water replacement on Gene Nicolay and an area near Bender. Public Works Equipment. Citywide trash receptacle replacement, and I noticed as questions were coming in that that wasn't as clear as it could be. The trash receptacle replacement is for the trash receptacles on Silver Spring and Port Washington Road and the bus stops that we maintain. Many of them are from nineteen ninety six or shortly thereafter and are literally falling apart. So we started replacing those. We replaced them around Bayshore. If you notice, there's some beautiful black garbage cans. They got a little topper on them so that the rain doesn't go in. And then, once you see those, you can't unsee the bad ones, but they'll be replaced next year. Police squads are in capital projects and the beginning of the police station renovation plans. We are adding to the police station renovation with an entire solar project for both sides of the building. And also included is fifteen thousand dollars, I believe. Let me double check that number before I make that statement. Yes, fifteen thousand dollars to begin planning Winston Park. That would be that park that we figured out we have on the east side. Our tax incremental financing districts are at a maintenance point. Technology district is expensive debt payments only, and they're still on track to close in 2028. Bayshore expenses should be the developer incentive payment. And if you've been to Target, it turned out very nice. We had a little bit of a complaint with the drum line at seven AM on Sunday morning. They had a grand opening and Brown Deer Band was invited to play from seven to eight. And though it does not violate our noise ordinance, it probably was not the best choice. Little bit.
Sunday at seven is different than Monday at seven.
Yes. Yes, and as I was not made aware until nine thirty in the morning, it was too late to do anything.
Sure.
So, and, and they, they've indicated they do not plan to do that again. Not this year. This is by far the fastest I've run through an entire budget as it's forty five minutes. Do we have any questions about the overall document?
Oh, I don't. Thank you for answering my questions in advance.
You're welcome.
Why don't we just go around? We'll start with Alderman Shaw. Alderman Schmelzling submitted his multiple emails and like. Alderman Weezy?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Gaher.
I just, not a question about the budget per se, but I know that we could increase taxes to the extent that there's new construction. And so, just looking around, we've got Landmark Credit Union, Aldi, Starbucks, Jilly's Car Wash, Total Wine, and then the other Bayshore stores. Do we have a figure for, and some of those are probably not included yet. But do we have a figure for, for the net new construction?
Yes.
Or the value of that?
Oh, net new construction is identified by the state of Wisconsin. It was six million, five hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred. Oh, yep, that's right, twenty one. And so.
That was as of January first of twenty twenty one.
Correct. And that's what part of the challenge is. Everything is as of January first. So, one one twenty one, you would not see the completion of Landmark Credit Union. You may see a portion of it. Aldi and Starbucks was the year before. So we already saw that net new construction. Chase Bank was probably the year before. And that's, that's part of the challenge is how it, it fits so like, what are we, Jilly's Car Wash, that'll be as of one one twenty twenty two. So you'll see that for your twenty three budget.
We'll see Landmark Credit Union because it opened in April of this year, so it'll be January first of next year.
Correct.
If they're done by the end of this year, it'll be January first.
Yes. Yep. So that would be a January one of twenty twenty two net construction.
You're not speaking into your mic, so it's not in the recording.
They had a building and then they built a new one and then they tore it down. Is that net new construction?
Some of it will be net new construction, some of it'll be net loss. When you tear down a building, that gets added in, so the loss of the Pizza Hut. And then on top of that, you gain UW Credit Union.
You lose a credit union and a Pizza Hut and gain a larger credit union building. Probably not a significant increase between the two.
So with Jilly's, it's a hundred percent net new construction because there wasn't anything to come down.
Alderman Gaher.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Alderman Doherty?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Vukovich? Okay, so I just had one question about TIF seven.
Okay.
The tech district. It looks as if we have, the, the money that comes in, there's about thirty four hundred dollars that goes in fees and expenses. And then everything else gets applied directly to the bond, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's why.
And then.
All the tax money that comes in from the, from the TIF goes directly to the bond. So a portion of it doesn't go into the city based on previous assessed value before the TIF was started or anything like that?
No. So, and if you look at the debt schedule on page one twenty seven, you will see that the principal payments right now are at one point seven million. And starting in twenty twenty five, they increase. And so we'll be utilizing more of that fund balance over those years until we're able to close it in twenty eight.
Okay, so if you look at the, for example, the, the twenty twenty two budget on page one fifty four, the taxes from the TIF increment are two million, two hundred thirty three thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars.
Yes.
But if you go back to what you were talking about on page one twenty seven.
Yes.
For twenty twenty two, we're only paying one point seven million in taxes?
Plus the, plus the four hundred and fifty three thousand in interest. And so what that is, is it totals, debt service is two point one five six of the two point two three. So we'll see excess revenue of five hundred and eighty six. But that, like I said, that fund balance that, that's building is gonna be utilized in three years because we have a larger debt payment.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
And we are on schedule to pay this off in twenty eight.
Correct. And then that closes and then that, all of that increment comes back on to the general tax rule in twenty twenty eight.
Okay. Right now, our total, other than the general obligation bonds, which we rotate every year, we pay some off, we add. Okay. Right now, our total, other than the general obligation bonds, which we rotate every year, we pay some off, we add new for capital. We are only in debt for business development for fifteen point five million dollars.
Principal and interest, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions from any members of the council?
Okay.
Anything you want to add?
Well, November eighth, there'll be a public hearing.
Right.
And then from the public hearing, we'll immediately approve a resolution. And I'm just gonna make this statement again, and I'll make it again on November eighth. The public hearing is not just for the twenty twenty two preliminary budget, but it is also for the twenty twenty one American Rescue Plan Fund. And that's to properly approve that fund for twenty one. And then this one, and then all of the program budgets for twenty twenty two. Okay. Other than that, that, that should be all on the budget.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you to you, to Sean, to all the department heads, everybody who helped put together each different part of the program budget. So we appreciate the detail. Say the, I've been there. This is my seventh budget now, and they have been easier and easier to understand the last few years. I appreciate the narrative, the descriptions for everything. I, I think that is incredibly helpful. Only one of us up here is an accountant and two of us up here, I guess, are getting the counting.
If there are any other changes, you'll get a different color set of pages. You, you, we are still monitoring it over the next couple of weeks. Make sure we haven't missed anything. Make sure everything's tidied up. We, we don't want to come in after the fact. We prefer to do it prior.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on then. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. We got staff here in the room and nobody online. So I guess there's, uh, yeah. No one here wanting to talk and tell us about our schools, huh? I'm sorry, I was having a conversation right before here about the McOne Beansville School recall. Apparently people are showing up there at city meetings and saying.
Those jinx.
Yeah. All right. Next is the consent agenda. There's two items on the consent agenda. One is adoption of the minutes of our meeting on October eleventh and the approval of the monthly reports to be placed on file. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
A move.
Moved by Alderman Doherty. Second about Alderman Vukovich. Any discussion? Hearing none without objection. The consent agenda is adopted. Hearing no objection. We'll move on. Commission, committee and board reports. We will start this time with Alderwoman Shaw.
Unfortunately, I didn't, wasn't able to attend the North Shore Library Board Meeting. So Mr. Weezy, you could probably respond to that. Were you there?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Alderman Schmelsling.
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, Alderman Weezy.
Thank you. Yeah, the, last week, the library board met and Rachel can, you know, participate in this as well. But there was just a, it was a relatively quick meeting, but the, it was a general discussion on the status of fundraising, things of that nature. And so this, it's ever so slowly moving forward.
Thank you. Alderman Doherty.
Just wondering on that, is there going to be any update as we get to this rather than falling off a cliff on twelve thirty one?
Right. So just to expand on Alderman Weezy's comment, the foundation has paid for renderings from Rinca Architects to be able to properly do a fundraising project. They've also reached out to each of the communities to obtain mailing lists for all of the taxpayers of the four communities to send out a mass mailing. And they have reached out to Nicolay to obtain all of the information on the firms they used for fundraising. And from what it sounded from Dr. Kabara is that they are a few steps ahead of the game with everything they've been doing over the last year. So that was good news. Bayside did meet with Paul, who was the, who's the foundation president. And he had identified two donors of a high level that have, one's made a commitment already and one is on the hook. And then as far as what we would present to you, I'm still working on getting some information. Hopefully November eighth, I'll get you some Glendale library. Information, for lack of a better phrase.
I may. On, but the donor that has been identified, the major donor. Has a condition that all communities need to approve of everything before they make the final commitment. Did that change?
That was one of them that they had on the hook, not the one that committed.
Okay.
There was different, there were two.
Alderman Gohard.
Board of Appeals this Wednesday at six PM.
All right.
And it'll be broadcast on Zoom.
Doherty.
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Vukovich.
This is my last report for the League of Municipalities. I have completed my three year term.
Three year sentence?
Three year term on the board. I do have to say, it was an honor to be there with Steve. We had a good time and we really made sure that people knew that Glendale was awesome. We, I just think they did and they were clapping and even gave kudos to the mayor. So. Hopefully we will get somebody in Milwaukee County with just Mayor Justin Nichols' appointment. But right now, we have one Milwaukee County representative at all. And let's just hope we get another representative, because right now, we're kinda not in a good place.
Who is the representative now from Milwaukee County?
It would be the Milwaukee County, or Milwaukee, city of Milwaukee, Shantia Lewis.
Alderman Lewis, okay. All right. Well, let's hope that we get some appointment from the county. At one point, we used to have four or five seats.
No, it's city of Milwaukee.
Right.
They, they may replace, they may not. They, they're the only ones that have a guaranteed. But there is a push to have the five major cities, areas to at least have one representative on the board.
At the time you were appointed, the mayor of West Alice, the mayor of Wauwautosa, the mayor of, of South Milwaukee and someone from the city of Milwaukee and you.
It was myself, Tammy from Shortwood.
Oh, in Shortwood.
Um, Dan Devine was not on when I got appointed. Uh, Eric Brooks. It was, and then Chevy Johnson. It was four, oh, and Kathy Elak. So there was five in Milwaukee County.
And now you're saying there's only one person from the city of Milwaukee and that's it?
There's zero right now.
Zero right now. Okay. All right. And I actually don't have anything additional to report.
I do, I have a staff report. I just wanted to, I, I gave you the update on the Target grand opening. Trick or treat is on Sunday from one to four. We are looking to make improvements on our website. So one of the things we have come up with is to put a list of approved solicitor permits and a list of approved transient merchant permits on the site so that it's easy for everyone to access and have an understanding of what's been approved. So once those are ready, I'll send those links out to each of you. Also, at the request of Alderman Schmelsling, in your Dropbox, where you find your council packets, you will also find a folder that identifies North Shore agreements. So that is all I have. The North Shore agreements for any of the North Shore agreements.
Health Department, Air Department, Library, everything. Yep. All right. And any announcements or anything?
Seriously, the fastest budget of my twenty five years. And the first one I had was ten hours long. So this was incredible. Ten hours, crafted, all day on a Saturday.
Okay. Alderman Vukovich, announcement?
Oh, no, I just.
Oh, would you want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Alderman Doherty, like you might want a second.
Second, Ed.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Host, we stand adjourned.
Before seven, I love my council. I just want to tell you guys, you don't understand how people were in awe of us having meetings from six to maybe eight or eight thirty at the latest on our council meetings.